Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session, one of several today, Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. It is 1:02 PM. My name is Kai Menzger, Chair of the Board. Commissioner Carolyn Mahia is present, as well as County Manager, Miro Chavez, and two members of our Community Planning, Economic Development Department, Jennifer Davis, the Planning Manager, and Caitlin Nelson. I don't know your exact title, Caitlin, but all things watersheds, you know, planning group. So Commissioner Edwards, I believe, is walking in at the moment. So I think we're all here, and we have an hour. Public can attend on our county YouTube channel, or by conference call if that's, if that's your only way to do so, by calling 360-252-9020, pin 1234. And Romero, I'm going to turn this to you to frame today's briefing.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is informational to keep the board up to date, and just for the benefit of the public, this is related to the Hearst decision, that it was, it was a federal lawsuit, I believe, in which put restrictions in terms of water wells in no just in Thurston County, but across the state. The legislature passed the Stream Flow Restoration Act, which it was considered to be the Hearst fix, which here in Thurston County, we have several Wyra's. That will be the, the stream restoration as to how we're going to be addressing the requirements of the Hearst decision. So you may recall, each of those Wyra's, I believe, we have five in the county, required for us to submit a plan as to how we're going to be managing the requirements of that particular mandate in coordination with the Department of Ecology. Each of those Wyra's had a different timelines as to when we need to submit those plans to Ecology. The board approved the submittal of, I believe, the Nisqually Wyra last year, which we, has been submitted, and is in the process of being approval. And this is a, an effort by different stakeholders as to how those Wyra's and the plans associated within, within needs to be moving forward. Those deadlines of submittal to the Department of Ecology are very critical, because absent the stakeholders not agreeing and submitting the context of a plan, then the Department of Ecology will have to make a decision for us. And that is probably some of the restrictions that we have. Today, you're going to have a conversation, an update on the Wyra 14, which is the Kennedy Goldsboro Wyra. So Carolyn has been the one who really has been working hard on all the many different Wyra's. And one that is coming up is Wyra 13. Hopefully, that's not part of the conversation today, but that is a briefing that I'm trying to schedule with the Squawson Island Tribe representatives, because there's some comments within that Wyra. The board needs to be part of that conversation. That is the framework. Did I miss anything, Jennifer or Carolyn?
I think you set it up pretty well. If you don't mind, I'm going to say a few more words than let Kate take over with the PowerPoint to really get into the details of what we're talking about. Again, Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager, Associate Planner, Kate Nelson, has been elbows deep in watershed planning, which people call Wyra or RIA. It stands for Watershed Resource Inventory Area. And we have five in the county. And we have completed plans covering three of those five watersheds. So we've had success. But in the big picture, this work is all about ensuring that we have enough water resources in the county to support both future growth in our rural areas, as well as support the fish and wildlife species and other existing water users in those rural areas that rely on those same aquifers and streams. So if we don't achieve that balance among these water users, not only does our natural resource suffer, but the ability of rural landowners to get future permits for new homes and wells will be affected. So the county is engaged in this process as required under state law. And we have been bringing to you different plans throughout the last couple of years. And today, we're bringing, as Romero mentioned, the Kennedy Goldsboro Wyra Plan. And you don't need to make a decision today on adopting this plan, but there will be an upcoming vote at the Watershed Planning Group on whether to submit this draft plan to Ecology for their approval. So we will be seeking some direction on that from the board today. But much like the climate mitigation plan the board recently approved, watershed plans are designed to include a whole list of actions and projects that will be implemented over time by multiple partners. And in watersheds, those partners include state agencies, multiple counties, if the watershed crosses county borders, cities, tribes, agriculture, building industry, environmental groups. So building these plans together, and it's a consensus-based process. It takes a lot of effort, negotiation, technical work among the planning partners. So by the time we come to you with a draft, it's been, it's gone through a lot at those planning unit levels. Ecology ultimately has the approval authority. And getting an approved plan means that the county will have access to quite a bit of state funding to implement the projects that are listed in the plan. So it's an important process. I'm going to turn it over to Kate to walk through some of this in a lot more detail, and then maybe questions at the end. Go ahead, Kate.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. Let me share my screen real quick here. As mentioned, I'm Kate Nelson, Associate Planner in the Planning and Economic Development. And I'm going over the stream restoration process in general, as well as the Biocorte Plan, also known as the New Goldsboro. I'll go over the Stream Flow Restoration Act, what's required, how it gets implemented, the benefits to participating, and the actual components of the plan. Originally, the Hearst decision was a result of a lawsuit, as Romero mentioned, around permanent exempt wells, mainly those wells associated with single-family homes outside of water system, and largely in the county. So it mostly impacted the county with the first decision.
Kate, can I stop you for one sec?
Yeah.
You're a bit muffled on my end. I don't know if in the boardroom you're coming through loud and clear. I want to make sure we can hear you well. All right, Commissioners, are you hearing her okay?
No, muffled on this end.
Yeah, I agree.
If I hold the mic right up to my face, how's that?
Yeah.
Okay. I need to, I need to invest in a better one. Yeah, okay. So the Hearst decision largely affected the county, was largely related to permanent exempt wells, those, those new homes that go in outside of water systems and largely in the county. It required that jurisdictions make an independent determination of water availability, where previously, it had been assumed that Ecology would step in as the regulator, but that otherwise permanent exempt wells were generally allowed. This created a lot of confusion with, and uncertainty for jurisdictions, mostly counties, throughout the entire state. So in 2018, the Stream Flow Restoration Act replaced the Hearst decision, also known as the Hearst fix. The act requires local jurisdictions and organizations work together with pre-designated watersheds. That's what the, the RIA's are referred to, yeah, referred to as RIA's, Water Resource Inventory Areas. They were created as planning units back in the 70s or 80s. So they're not new. And the counties must charge a fee for new wells, with a portion of that fee going to Ecology. The county must also require that it be recorded on the property, what new restrictions are for any new wells going in, and then create and adopt long-term watershed plans. The plans themselves require a couple of different things. One of them, one of the main points of the plan is to assess what the future water use will be over the next 20 years. And this generally involves determining what the population growth will look like. And it's still only for permanent exempt wells. So that growth expected in water systems, or those that would require a water right, are removed from the determination that we're using to go off of. The plans then identify offset actions to essentially replace the amount of water that we're calculating to be used by the permanent exempt wells over the next 20 years. And this is largely through conceptual projects, especially those that are directly related to improving stream flow. There's also a, a necessary net ecological benefit, which is essentially just making sure that if water is being moved around for a stream flow benefit, that habitat is also taken into consideration in the watershed. Couple of other associated notes. The RIA's are Water Resource Inventory Areas. I've gone over that. And that is identified in state law for planning and regulatory purposes. Ecology is currently funding our participation for the county through a grant, which will last up until June of this year, which lines up with the deadlines for the last of the county RIA plans. These plans are consensus-based, meaning that all official participating members must agree on all components of the plan in order to submit it to Ecology. This includes the counties, the cities, the tribes, and other organizations that were identified by the legislature for participation. The plans must offset the amount of water anticipated by permanent exempt wells over the next 20 years as a minimum. If we, if we could not find projects to offset the amount that we were calculating for the growth, then Ecology has stated that that would prevent approval of the plan. When the members of each RIA agree on the plan, they submit it to the Department of Ecology. Ecology approves the plan, and then the county adopts the plan. The Shaheilas Plan was recently agreed upon by members, and Ecology has recently announced their approval of the plan. So I will be coming back to you soon to discuss a resolution to adopt the Shaheilas RIA Plan to be included with our finalized plans. So it would be the Shaheilas and then Squali Plan that we would have concluded. Like I just mentioned, the Shaheilas Plan addendum was approved by Ecology. The Nisqually Plan was adopted by the county in 2019. And the last two plans, Kennedy Goldsboro and the Shutes, are hoping to, the groups are hoping to submit agreed-upon plans by the end of April. And you can see the Kennedy Goldsboro RIA 14 in the northwest corner of the county here, in this light blue color. By participating in this process and attempting to come to agreement with the other RIA members, the county is avoiding new regulations and restrictions on homeowners, which could be implemented by Ecology if a RIA does not adopt a plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But projects in approved plans are also eligible for Ecology grant funding. Thurston County has had one project fully funded and completed by that's grant funding. And the county received funding in 2020 to determine feasibility of two new projects located in the Squali RIA. And these plans ultimately address both water quality and quantity issues, and provide opportunities to improve collaboratively with other members of the RIA's. There are a range of project types identified in the plan. Some involve purchasing water rights, or are project types that need a location. Some of them are, some of it is possibly land that's already been purchased by an organization, and a concept for a project was needed to implement on site. Or even, there have been some developed projects that just needed funding. This is the Albany Street Pond in Rochester, which was one of the first projects that Ecology funded with the Stream Flow Restoration Act grant funding. And I've actually seen used by a couple of different organizations as an example for how they could apply for grant funding. So I think that's pretty exciting, that, that we're being used as an example of what to do. To touch on what restrictions from Ecology could look like, if a RIA doesn't agree on a plan, or if it doesn't get approved by Ecology, Ecology could put a limit on maximum daily withdrawals from wells. They could require metering. They could increase the well fee that we're required to charge. And they could implement further restrictions during droughts or other limitations. RIA 1, otherwise known as the Nukkak Watershed, did not agree on a plan prior to the deadline. And so some of these items were implemented in their watershed. However, these restrictions go through a statewide comment period, and may differ depending on the RIA, especially based on existing conditions or concerns. Shifting to Kennedy Goldsboro RIA 14, unless there are any questions on the general process. You can see that Thurston County doesn't have an insignificant portion of the watershed, but it is smaller compared to the watershed as a whole, only including the Kennedy Gold, Kennedy Sub Basin as a part of this watershed within Thurston County. Most land is located within Mason County, and the city of Shelton is also located in RIA 14, as well as the Squawson and Sacoomish tribes are also leading interested parties in addition to other RIA working members. So there are several conceptual projects identified in the plan located within Thurston County. The discussion with the group members around these potential projects is largely based on how to determine what kind of benefit could be provided for the watershed, if any of these projects come to fruition. So this is the very first step, with the understanding that all of these projects still need local review, they need staff time to determine prioritization, whether or not there's funding, or any other potential concerns prior to any work being done on them. Or even to agree to start considering them as projects that the county may or may not be interested in working on. Including them in our sub-basin, or as possible interested parties, does not mean that we have agreed to work on them. It doesn't agree to find funding for them. It just shows that the members were interested in these as potential projects. It could mean that another organization steps up and wants to apply for funding for them and wants our help. So I want to make it very clear that these are not to the degree where you would potentially see them on a CIP, Capital Improvement Projects. It's, it's still prior to any of those steps. So this is just to get it on a list, to make sure that we're aware of it, to know that there are potential things that we could look into in the future. The RIA members also have identified policies that could be considered as potential actions implemented in the plans once they are agreed upon and approved. The main policies in this RIA plan include improving monitoring and research in the watershed, methods to fund community water systems, steps for more comprehensive water planning, and options to potentially fund projects, to fund aspects of the plan, tracking growth and its impact, and the goals that members generally have to continue collaborating with the Kennedy Goldsboro Group to implement the RIA plan. At this point, does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards. I have a few as well.
Uh, did, did the lower Shaheilas and upper Shaheilas, I guess, they were put together, I take it, right?
Yes.
And, and did that lower Shaheilas, it's just a little sliver in the county there, did that have any residential activity going on there? Or was it all timber owned, or what? I don't know that property very well.
Are you talking about the upper Shaheilas in general? What, what?
Yeah, no, the lower, the lower Shaheilas, Wyra 22, I think it is.
Yes, that is, if I'm remembering correctly, that is mostly timberland.
It's white?
Timber.
It's all timber?
Mostly timber.
Mostly timber.
Okay, I just was wondering how that went, because I'm going to be looking at some water quality things, and that'd be nice to know. So thank you.
Caitlin, are you gonna, I have some questions, but they don't need to be asked now. Do you have more to your presentation, or are you opening it up for questions?
No, I'd like to open it to questions.
Okay. Commissioner Mahia, do you have anything? At this point?
No, not at this point.
Okay. I'll ask a few. The, so this is a funny, I don't mean to be funny, but the, the plan for Wyra 14 is a lot thicker than the plan generated for Shaheilas. And I'm just wondering, I haven't had a chance to really, I just got this today, so I haven't looked at it in depth. What, what all is included in this plan that, that wouldn't have been in the Shaheilas Plan?
Sure. There are a couple aspects, I think. First being that the Shaheilas Plan is technically an addendum, because they're a group that have been meeting for years, and had already had a plan implemented based on an optional process. So their addendum is specific to the Stream Flow Restoration Act, and they didn't have to go through the process of determining how they would work together since they were already doing it. In addition to that, there are very active members in Kennedy Goldsboro that wanted to make sure that there were items that were written out and addressed that is a little bit more detailed than what Shaheilas was interested in. As an example, in my opinion, I think the, the policies and the adaptive management are much more detailed in Kennedy Goldsboro, as well as the Shutes. And I think a lot more was implied with Shaheilas, that there would be a continuation of meeting and tracking, and that sort of thing, where, since that wasn't identified in Kennedy Goldsboro, that needed to be written out and identified. I think that, that's a big part of it.
That's not cool.
So one of the things that, under your, under the recommended policies, one of the things that came up in RIA 13, and I think the board's going to be addressing it with the tribe, is the, this idea that there were Ecology rules regarding the watershed that they felt were out of date and inconsistent, and could be, that watershed could benefit from having those rules updated by Ecology. Is that, is there a similar thing going on in RIA 14? Are there Ecology rules that Squawson Island Tribe, for example, might argue are out of date and, and contradictory and need to be updated?
Commissioner, your, your, your volume comes a little bit off.
Okay, I don't know how to fix that. I'm off all the way.
Hey, Brian, are you there? Brian, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ty. We just couldn't hear what you were saying over here.
Okay, I realize that's a problem. I don't know how to fix it, though.
Yeah, I'll have Brian try to increase the volume here in the room.
So my question was, in RIA 13, one of the policy things that was discussed, and that I discussed with the Squawson Island representative, was about Ecology rules, old, old Ecology rules that are out of date, inconsistent, need to be updated. The watershed could benefit from having those rules updated. And there was a discussion about wanting to request that Ecology, Ecology do that work. I did not speak with them at all about RIA 14. So I'm wondering, was there a similar, are there similarly outdated Ecology rules from the 80s that, that were discussed as a policy in RIA 14? Or is, or is that a different situation? Because I know that some watersheds don't have those types of Ecology rules, and maybe the ones that they have in 14 are okay. I'm just curious if that's, there's a parallel discussion in 14 of what I heard about the 13?
There has been some discussion. It was much more casual, I believe. And I don't know all of the science behind the impact of the rules in which area, but they're very similar rules. What they consider to be outdated is mostly on a statewide issue. I also know that Kennedy Goldsboro doesn't have any mainstreams in it, the way that the Shutes does. They're mostly smaller, and the habitat is different, I believe. So it, there wasn't a push to include policies in Kennedy Goldsboro to address rules. It was more of a general look at how it's being handled. Yeah.
Okay. And another question that came up in that meeting I had last week was about, you were saying that the, going back to the beginning, what the Stream Flow Restoration Act requires. You said offsetting projects that will offset 20-year projection for new permanent exempt wells. In the Squawson Island Tribe's letter to Ecology that, that you gave me to read, said that they had some legal, they had some legal analysis that suggested that it's, it's not just the well. There's a wider array of activities that need to be offset. And I'm just wondering, is that, I wanted the board to kind of hear that, and whether or not that was an issue in the 14, in the 14 plan.
Sure. So let me try to summarize that. The language written by legislature as the Stream Flow Restoration Act, as most state law does, has some confusing language that needed to be interpreted by Ecology. And so Ecology has released documents with their statement on how they interpreted the law, and how they will review our plans, since they are the ones who need to approve them, that they're identifying how they read that legal language. The Squawson's letter identifies how they're interpreting the language, and how it differs from what Ecology has interpreted as. So the Stream Flow Restoration Act is interpreted by Ecology as meeting plans that identify growth over the next 20 years through permanent exempt wells, and what projects would offset that water supply. The Squawson have an interpretation that it includes all existing permanent exempt wells in addition to the next 20 years of growth, and that it is a more broader water use, not just limited to permanent exempt wells. And I, I hope I'm not mixing that up with something that they interpret legally needs to be done in general. It, it could be a combination, I'm sure, between what their legal interpretation of the law is, and what they think legally should be done to protect water rights. But that includes a much broader interpretation than what Ecology wants in the plans. And they have stated that concern in RIA 14 as well, but have since made a statement that they would not prevent further discussion on the plan development at this time, even with those concerns.
So Kate, it's a consensus-based process.
So Kate, as a consensus-based process, I mean, obviously, everyone at the planning table might not walk away with everything that they wanted and issues come up that may be better addressed or best addressed at a statewide legislative arena, not through individual RIA plans. And so from my reading of how Kennedy Goldsboro has been going, the current draft plan that's published on the website and provided to the board has that preliminary agreement from all of those planning unit members. And then everyone right now is walking the plan around to their groups, just like we're bringing it to the board. So if additional issues come up, they will be discussed at the planning unit. So I think though, this one has seen a lot of consensus if I'm reading that right. Kate, would you agree to that?
Yes, but ultimately, there's no way to know if, at the end of the day, everybody's board will agree to all of it because they're not the ones that have been attending the meetings. So more issues could come up than we anticipate, but we won't know.
Okay, I'm going to circle back to other commissioners. Any other questions for Caitlin?
Yes.
Go ahead Commissioner.
As, as we move forward with these, like on 14 and 22 and 13, is there, is there going to be eventually something that puts some teeth in the law about, you know, garbage dumps right along the creeks of the river, you know, that are obviously polluting things? That we will be able to have some teeth to take some action against those type of perpetrators? Are we going to develop, is that going to be developed into the plan eventually? So we'll be able to do something about it?
Nothing at this point has been identified for any of these plans to further restrict or further implement or anything like that. There's been discussion about something possibly happening, but it, it's one of those things where they can't say that it's going to happen one way or another. So it's something that we as a jurisdiction could consider, but coming from Ecology, they haven't stated anything definitive about something that would come in addition to these plans.
So there'll be no state help for those kind of cleanups, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, maybe Caitlin, is, is the efforts a little bit, is a different approach? This is related to water availability and not necessarily to water quality.
Well, I thought it was both. I thought it was availability and quality.
So maybe we can clarify on, on, on the, on the underlying effort of the Wira. Because I was under the pressures mainly related to water availability and not necessarily water quality. There may be some nexus along the way, but I don't think the objective is to address water quality. Is that correct?
Right, the priority is water quantity and it does include quality, but it is more of a, whether or not there's a nexus, like you mentioned. And there is discussion about how this relates to comprehensive water planning as a whole and whether or not there will be funding to help implement this. But ultimately, either way, whether it's quantity or quality or includes both, there has not yet been any funding or help identified for implementing, but that it could come down the line.
But part of the plan does not have in there some type of an enforcement mechanism. I mean, I'd make it a capital crime for some of these people to dump the stuff they dump in there, but I, I know that's an extreme. But we've got places all along our rivers that are very detrimental and it doesn't seem like we seem to care about that activity. We, we tell people about a, maybe a septic system five miles away, they get in more trouble than a garbage dumper right on the edge of the stream or the river. That's where I'm trying to find some idea of why. It's, seems like it ignores these horrendous problems. I took some pictures today on the, on the Deschutes River. It'll curl your hair if I show them to you. I mean, they're just junk cars leaking oil out and no septic system goes right into the river. We don't, nobody seems to care about it. That's kind of where I'm coming from, I guess.
Commissioner might be, you know, on your, one of your early slides, it says there are benefits of RIA planning and the last four points is addressed water quality and quantity issues. And I understand that at a deep level, there's a connection, but at a more superficial level, I think what Ramiro said is a good way for us as commissioners to understand it, that this Streamflow Restoration Act is really a pretty purely water quantity scheme to allow drilling to continue from exempt wells in rural areas. So we're going to have to find other ways to address the things that future we're talking about, unfortunately. Okay, what else? So Jennifer kind of hit my last question there, which was kind of, I wanted to kind of hear, where are we in the consensus process? Is there, are we likely to get everybody on board for this plan? Sounds like yes, though, although as you point out, and Squaxn Island said the same thing, you know, their council really, their representatives were deep in the weeds, but their council hadn't really taken these plans up. And so there was no way to say for sure that there wouldn't be weird questions or concerns from particular council members, just like commissioners might come up with, you know, concerns and unpredictable concerns as well. So seems like we're on track. Is there any issues you wanted to highlight for us? I mean, you're, sounds like you'll be recommending, if the plan stays in this current form, it's adopted by the county. Is that true?
Yes, definitely.
Nothing you're really concerned that we didn't cover or a big failing on your, from your perspective?
No, I think we'll have to see, I think it's on track for consensus and we'll just have to see if any other organizations have issues that they want to bring up before having that final discussion.
Okay, and what's the timeline again for this?
The vote is currently scheduled for the end of April, so we're hoping to have everything worked out before then.
But you're looking at board's direction sometime in March, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we've each got a copy of this fairly thick plan that we can chew on. Commissioners, anything else for Jennifer or Kate?
I see the county manager's got something.
Yep.
Not necessarily a question, I, I'd just like to, I'd just like to emphasize what Caitlin stated on the previous, on the previous slides related to the offset projects. And I know that sometimes this gets to the community and creates a little bit of uncertainty. I'd just like to emphasize what she has stated in terms of feasibility. Those are feasibility studies. They are not related to a specific project. And, and the one that I'd like to key is the Summit Lake Alternative Water Source is a feasibility, is that's what is included in this plan. So I'd just like to emphasize what Caitlin did, just to make sure the public hears that correctly, clearly.
Some projects are real projects and some projects are feasibility. I mean, there's a combination, right?
Right, but, but what, what I'm saying is, you know, knowing that the source of water for the Summit Lake residents, we know where they're coming from. So this is a feasibility to look alternatives to that.
Right.
Right, without, without keying a specific outcome.
What are the, Steamboat Middle and Steamboat Upper, what are those about?
Those are also both very much in the feasibility stages. Those are lands that have been identified as already holding water and the question comes into play in whether or not those can be improved upon. So those, those are also very conceptual.
Okay.
All right, could I make, ask another question, Ty?
Yep.
As we move forward with these, are, what does it take to put some type of a priority on the quality of the water? I mean, we're here in Western Washington and there's a lot of water. I mean, okay, you could say it could be short here and there, but I think the quantity of the, or the quality of the water is a more important topic. I mean, is there a way to emphasize that? I understand that DNR now is thinking about doing commercial fertilization on, on state property. That's millions of tons of nitrogen they dump in the water. And we just don't care about it or nobody wants to look at it? Nobody wants to challenge the big boys or what is that all about? Is there, could you give me some kind of an answer in that regard?
What I can say is that once these plans are approved, it, it's in the county's hand to determine how we implement it. And along with all of the other efforts that we're making towards water quantity and quality, we'll want to consider those things together. And as the board, you would get to decide how we prioritize those things. So it's sort of out of, out of Ecology and into our hands once, once we've completed them. Yeah.
Well, I, I guess Ecology issues these corporate operations permits to dump toxic chemicals in our water. They, I, I see them as a co-conspirator almost. I mean, I don't understand how one regulatory body can give permits to another group and now we've got DNR talking about doing the same thing. So it bugs me that we're doing all this work and nothing about water, the quantity, or the quality of the water. I mean, I guess I'm frustrated. Sorry, I'm not taking that out on you. I'm just frustrated.
No, and, and you have been, Commissioner, you have been extremely consistent related to your water quality comments. I think what we're struggling today and the staff is struggling also is, is, is different box in which we have in this conversation. And, and goes back to the Hurst decision, they put some restrictions on, on wells, which is really related to water quantity. The legislature, the, the fix to the Hurst decision was really related to water quantity, which, you know, allows for development to continue to occur. Water quality, you know, in this particular case may not be the right box in which we can make our argument. And, and that's what I, you know, I apologize if, if myself or staff comes across dismissive of your comments, but it's not. It's really the challenges that we have, how we can work with this, the box that have been put in front of us to address so many items, the, and issues related to water. But, but you're right, I think if there is anything that we can do in terms of water quality and violations with that, maybe we need to find another way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, are we good?
We're good. I mean, I, I think the county engages in water quality monitoring and we're undergoing a shoreline master program update, which will be coming to you later in this year, which is very focused on water quality. And there are lots of ways we're engaged in maintaining and improving water quality throughout the county in various programs. And while the RIA plans are really focused on water quantity, if you think about some of the project types in these plans, such as retaining or restoring forest cover, doing managed aquifer recharge, there are water quality benefits to that. Whenever you can store water in a natural state and have it filter through a natural system and recharge the aquifer, that all helps. But it is focused on quantity under these RIA plans. And I think that you'll have other opportunities to discuss water quality and what we're doing about those when we bring to you other sets of regulations like the shoreline master program later in the year.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're back at 2:00 PM, pocket holders.
Right. So commissioners, you have homework. March 3rd, staff is going to come back to go about this plan. So nice, nice reading until then.
Well, just to clarify, actually, March 3rd is the date that we will be going over to Deschutes, so it will be a little bit different.
So when, when are you coming back on this plan then, for the board?
No, I think we can do both, Kate. I think, I think March 3rd is the next scheduled briefing we have on this topic for you. And so if there are questions or red flags or issues that you identify in this plan, you can bring them to that briefing and we can accept those in and have a discussion. And then we'll also be focusing at that next briefing on the RIA 13 Deschutes plan as well.
And it was my request that we have that meeting with the Squaxn Island representative before the 3rd of March.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm working on setting up the meeting call within the next two weeks prior to March 3rd. Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you very much. We're adjourned.
Thank you.